All right, welcome everyone to the Tuesday, October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty three Tom Water City Council Work Session. I'm calling the meeting to order and I believe. I we have all of the council members present, so we can dispense with roll call. Um, so any questions before I get started? If not, I will go into the Tom Water Comprehensive Plan and the two thousand and twenty five periodic update. And Brad Madrid will be presenting.
Mayor, can I just make a comment before we start?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of things, not that I expect it with our schedule, we will speak about tonight, but I'd like to like. Put them put them out there at the end of the of the work session as topics to. Um, either get some answers to at some point or to put on to another agenda.
Yeah, and and you can also email those also too.
Yes, I know that, but some of them are in response to my colleagues, so.
Okay.
So I mean, I'm not gonna take long on not asking for a lot of conversation. I just wanna. I just wanna speak them.
Okay. All right, um, so go ahead, Brett.
I got all excited and turned my speaker up. Can everyone see the presentation?
Yes, we can. It's kind of small, but we can see it.
Okay, uh, unfortunately, I think I'm I'm stuck with the size, but um. Tonight, I'd sort of like to take the the city council through basics of what the kind of Tom Water Comprehensive Plan is before we delve into actually. The process of what we have to go through in order to update it. There are a number of council members who weren't here for the last update. Uh, so this will be a new process, and so I want to make sure that everyone understands what we where we've gone and where we're going. Uh, just a little background, our city population is forecast to grow by more than ten thousand people by twenty forty five, which is the end of the next periodic update period. Um, determining where the new and current residents will live, work, and play is an underlying question for all these discussions. And comprehensive planning is the process by which the community large as well as the city itself answers that question. So your intent tonight is sort of walk you through what is the comprehensive plan, address the question of why it's important. And to touch on some of the primary issues that will be coming back through our discussions about the periodic update. Uh, these probably will not be a huge surprise to anyone in the council, but affordable housing, diversity, equity, inclusion, climate. Economic development and capital facilities plan planning will be all play major roles in the update process. The beginning of the process is first of all, the under Washington State, the Growth Management Act requires. Fast growing cities and counties to manage their population growth through a comprehensive plan. Uh, and this has been done by the city since nineteen ninety. Uh, every ten years under the Growth Management Act, the city must conduct a periodic update. And uh, not only the comprehensive plan, but all the development regulations that that basically turn those policies into uh, what you see that built in the city. Last time, uh, we had a comprehensive plan update was in two thousand and sixteen. Uh, the comprehensive plan update process that we're starting now is a ten year cycle. Um, this is new. They keep changing the how many years between the cycles, but we're up to ten now. So this is actually fairly important because this will be the we'll have ten years of this plan before we get to open it up again in great detail. Just a general diagram showing how everything is fits together. The the State Growth Management Act lays out goals and uh, and specific instructions for a whole horse host of. Things that need to be addressed by the plan, including land use, housing, uh, how we deal with environment and so forth. That's translated on the local level by a comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan does two things. Number one. It addresses the state requirements that are outlined, allocating where population will how we how we will manage the state allocation for population and housing. And also, it's important because it creates the policies by which the development code and other things in the city are developed. So it it provides a it's an important bridge. The ultimate result, of course, is that we're building something. As part of this process, whether city related projects or housing or commercial or so forth through the private sector. The comprehensive plan articulates the goals, policies, and implementation actions that guide day to day decisions by the mayor, council, and the city staff. Uh, for managing the city's policy making and investment choices for the next twenty years. So that when we do a budget, we do a capital facilities plan. Any of those things, we refer back to what is going on and and put into the comprehensive plan. It's a it's the foundational document for that. It's a blueprint for addressing where development will occur occur in the city, for example, where we will have multifamily housing, where we'll have single family housing. Where we want to have mixed use, industrial development, and so forth. It also discusses the type and intensity. So when we are differentiating between multifamily versus single family uses and things like that. A difference in type and intensity and times of uses and so forth. It also provides the blueprint through the capital facilities plan of what the city services will be needed to support that and how those city services will be provided as part of the development. The plan's goals, policy, and actions are the foundation again for how the city addresses future public and private development. Again, as it mentions, it directs spending for capital facilities improvements. It establishes the impact fees and other development charges to pay for services needed by development, and it also guides the content of the development regulations. Uh, the updated plan will cover the period from two thousand and twenty five to two thousand and forty five. It will address diversity, equity, inclusion throughout. Uh, this was part of the city council's work program that was approved back in two thousand and twenty two for the update. It is also made explicit in the Growth Management Act as something that we need to be providing for. Also, the updated plan will uh incorporate many of the state related changes addressing affordable housing, climate change, transportation, and other topics. Development regulations translate those goals and policies into the zoning, land division, and environmental regulations. That property owners must follow the developed land. So say, for example, if a person wants to develop a grocery store. The development regulations will basically establish the size of the box, how big that building can be. How far away from this uh, the the law lines it can be, how tall it can be, how much parking, all those kinds of things are dealt with as part of development regulations. In addition to that, the citywide future land use map uh, in turn provides the basis for zoning that. And this is where the specific uses and intensities are identified on the map uh, for the city to use and develop as we go through the process. I wanted to give you a very quick snapshot of population, housing, and employment uh, projections, because we we should talk a little bit about. Sort of the magnitude of the growth that we're going to be achieving and some important caveats to the numbers that are presented here that I want to talk about a little bit. The first is dealing with our population forecast. On the left hand side of your screen is the population of the city in blue. Uh, as as of two thousand and ten, according to the census, uh, at that time, there were seventeen thousand, three hundred and seventy one people. Uh, in two thousand and twenty, we had grown to twenty five thousand, three hundred and fifty. And we're expecting, and now we're at twenty seven thousand, one hundred, we're expecting to go to thirty seven thousand, three hundred and eighty uh, by two thousand and twenty four. I'm gonna throw in the other, the the numbers on the top are that. Population within the unincorporated urban growth area of the city. So that gives you an idea of also those areas also intended to grow. Uh, you also notice that the numbers uh, went down from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty three because of annexations. Um, I want to throw in a caveat for the numbers because number one, uh, the numbers are based on projections that were done in two thousand and eighteen by Thurston Regional Planning Council, which is the standard practice for. Uh, doing our population forecast. So they're they originated in two thousand and eighteen. And my perspective is when we start to match these up against the expected uh, numbers for housing units that we're gonna need. Uh, I think the numbers for population are not enough to accommodate. What are expected housing? There's a mismatch, meaning that I think it's gonna be more than thirty seven thousand people by two thousand and forty five, based on. Current population growth and a number of other factors. The other important thing to understand is the regional projections were based on the existing zoning. And the land capacity from that zoning at that time. One of the things that will be taking uh, through as part of the update process and dealing with the affordable housing goals this the state has established. We're gonna need to provide probably more multifamily than we're providing now, meaning that we're gonna have far more apartments than single family houses. That in itself is going to mean that we're gonna uh, the the housing that we need to provide and also is gonna drive, I think, a higher population growth than what's indicated here. So. Again, just be aware, of course, this is a forecast. This is not. If we don't hit this number, we don't have to give people back or 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 so forth. They're gonna get credit if we took more. Um, just as this is just percentage increases, so we're looking at a current increase from today to two thousand and forty five, about thirty eight percent of the population. The U G A is projected to grow over two hundred percent, and if we take both of them together, it's gonna be over fifty percent. Council member Kathy, you have a question?
I I I do, um. When you began this, you said that we the comprehensive plan was for ten years?
Uh, I apologize, it's for twenty years. The the periodic update, the the time the period that we go through before we have to update it again is ten years. But we're fighting for a twenty year period as part of the comprehensive plan update.
So what we're doing in the first ten years? Or what we're what we're going to be doing now impacts how we're going to do this for ten years?
It will be ten years before we are updating the plan again to account for any additional growth. So we're the plan is always a twenty year plan, but we look at it every ten years.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. It's okay. They've changed the the periodic update years from five originally to eight the last time. Now we're up to ten, so it it changes.
Okay, could I ask that in the midst of the ten years and or, you know, the whole twenty years or? How how do we? How do we change this to accommodate what we may have uh, missed or you're saying? And because what if um, what if growth? Does or doesn't happen as we think it does, or we want to re um, you know, calculate something or change the land use or? Uh, that kind of thing. Is there that option? And how does that?
Yes. So every uh, this is built into our code. There is the city can amend its comprehensive plan on an annual basis, so no more than. Once per year. Uh, the annual update process is the opportunity we have to introduce new things that weren't part of the original update. For example. Uh, the council made changes when uh, the council adopted the Climate Action Plan, for example. Uh, also, when the Urban Forestry Plan was adopted, we we made changes and included elements in the comprehensive plan to account for those things. There's also built into this process under state law now, a five year check in process for specifically the housing side. Uh, which the state has focused a lot of energy on. So we're gonna have to do some reporting and analysis at the five year time to see how we're doing. Uh, before we get to the next ten year update period.
And part of the reason I'm asking that is, um, you know, the public wants to know that people who do development are people who, um, you know, just. Want to know how things might happen on their land, so to speak. And also, um, I heard something that some of these. Plans will be pushed a bit to change and to adjust uh, because of climate change.
Yes, there's the definitely the the potential for that. Um, the new state requirements have this past year added a requirement that we have what is known as a climate element. Added to the comprehensive plan, which is its own separate discrete element. Uh, last year, we had talked with the council about wanting to include. Uh, information from the Climate Mitigation Plan throughout all of the elements. Uh, our intent again is to to try to do that, but we also have to make sure that we have a separate climate element as part of this process. Uh, we also, and we were working with our sustainability coordinator. About this, but there are a number of projects that are that we're looking at beyond just the update process here. That will probably take the results of and incorporate into future amendments as we go through. Uh, because again, we're, you know, when we're trying to respond to things like the climate crisis and so forth, uh. There's not one magical solution, and we need to make adjustments and changes as we need to do and make sure that we achieve the goal that we set ourselves for.
Thank you very much for that.
Uh, one important thing, and this feeds into the discussion of both the population and housing is our household size. And what this means is that this is an average number. Uh, of the size of household in the city, residential dwelling unit. Uh, for example, in two thousand, there were two point two people. Now, I don't know how the point two actually worked out. I don't want to really think about that. Uh, but the important thing to keep in mind is actually our household size is it has increased actually, which is. Not necessarily expected because with the growing aging population, we probably expected it to go the other direction. But it what that means is we're getting more people per household uh, overall. Um, so keep that in mind when we're thinking about household sizes. So when we're thinking about um, housing in the next slide, we're thinking about. Each of those dwelling units accounting for about two point three eight people um, across the line. So another snapshot, an important thing to look at is the number of housing units the city has. And we'll start first with the number again on the left hand side, which is the two thousand and twenty census number. Uh, which shows that we had about eleven thousand, sixty four units uh, as of two thousand and twenty. Uh, twelve hundred units or so were in the U G A at that time. Now, this is, of course, before the annexations that went through for the island annexations the council did last year. We're looking at a uh, projected uh, total by two thousand and forty five of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty units. Um. That's important because that's a sixty percent increase over what we have currently. And if you've been. Tracking the numbers for population and so forth and comparing it against housing numbers, you'll notice that these numbers are higher percentage wise. Than the population numbers. And also, these are coming from a different source. These are coming actually from uh, state allocation numbers that are coming down. Uh, that are allocated in turn to the county and also in turn allocated to the city. Uh. First of all, a couple of things to keep in mind. We added about six hundred new housing units from two thousand and twenty to the middle of this year, April two thousand and twenty three, when we reported our population for O F M. Uh, we've also added another two hundred by annexation. Since that time, so we're not quite tracking in terms of meeting our uh. Two thousand and twenty five forecast. We're we're under what we should be in terms of what expected. Probably by pace. However, we do have some extra large developments that are going through the process right now. Uh, I believe we have about three thousand multifamily units that are currently in for permitting and probably about four hundred single family. Uh, so you know, in in terms of permitting, we're probably in line for it, but we're not quite there built yet. Pulling back a little bit, and I think this is an important thing to keep in mind. Uh, the State Department of Commerce says that statewide about a million one new homes will be needed statewide over the next twenty years. Uh. And the other important thing, and this is the reason for the graphic on this page, is the state has now established uh, by state law. That each jurisdiction must plan for different uh, income groups throughout the uh, the the spectrum. So. On one side, on the right, on the on the left hand side, you have things like permanent supportive housing. Uh, that's the zero to thirty percent uh. Um, median income. Uh, that also includes the non supportive uh, through one to thirty percent. You notice those numbers are really high. Uh, what that is telling us really is that statewide, we're not building enough of the under. Probably under eighty percent A M I, period. Uh, there is a huge gap in terms of what has been built and what people are be able to afford. Uh, and that really shows up in the numbers. The middle part there shows that a sort of a typical. Kind of units that would be providing housing for those various A M Is. And what that's really based on is. Expected cost and the ability for somebody to pay. So apartments would be on the under fifty percent. Multiplex would be somewhere like I say duplex or a triplex or cottage housing or things like that. And then single family really is a hundred and twenty percent A M I and more, which unfortunately is what the market seems to be uh, doing right now in the city. Uh, another really important thing to note is this figure of ninety one thousand emergency housing beds. That's temporary housing for homelessness and other. Uh, issues where people do not have a permanent uh, home to go to. Uh, that is part of the calculation, part of the thing that we need to be planning for as part of this update, and part of. Essentially, we have to show the math and how we're gonna achieve these things. Uh, are basically allow the market and the and the public nonprofit sector to achieve these things. I thought we needed one gigantic table with a whole bunch of numbers on it to really help lead a focus. Um, so this is our state housing allocation uh, to Thurston County. These are hard numbers. So this is exactly what. Commerce has said to Thurston County is, this is what you should be planning for. Now, the important thing to understand is the Thurston County and the cities uh, in it are currently having discussions about how to. Allocate each of these numbers across to all the jurisdictions, and we'll be coming back to the council. At your November twenty eighth meeting to walk you through that process. Uh, general government will get a taste of it at your next meeting in November. Uh, but it's a it's a semi complicated process, but it's it's also not. As complicated as it could be. What it really is doing is making sure that everybody's taking their fair share of the growth. So. In Thurston County's case, you'll notice under the eighty percent, there's two, the the bolded lines, first of all, just number of units needed. And then probably the easiest thing to understand is looking at these percentages, which is the percentages of breakdown. Uh, under thirty percent, thirty to fifty percent, fifty to eighty percent, and so forth. You'll notice that everything under eighty percent here is about. Sixty less a little bit under sixty percent. So even in the county, we're not providing that under eighty percent that we need to be providing for, or and we need to through our policies and zoning. Create the conditions that are allow people to develop and build those kinds of units. Very quickly, median household income, which is part of the A M I uh, descriptor is is the threshold where half the households earn more and half earn less. Uh, so at one hundred percent A M I, whoops, excuse me, um. That's not 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 one of the case, but essentially it it's it's a it's not an average. It's it's a media. So if we did an average, it would be highly skewed by those of the very high income brackets. Uh, that would pull it way up. The measure assesses money income only. It doesn't include additional benefits like employer contributions, the pension plans, medical benefits, and that kind of thing. To give you an idea of the jobs and the income level, this is obviously may or may not be true now, but this was from two thousand and twenty. Uh, to get a general idea of of the percentage of income and are the A M I and who what the kind of jobs would be. This is the on the far left hand side of the household income is is the household income for Thurston County in two thousand and twenty three. So if you're making thirty percent A M I or less, you're making thirty thousand or less uh, a year. And I don't think anybody would say that's enough to cover things like rent and food and never mind anything else. Uh, typically, obviously, fixed income, social security, S S I, all those things fit into that and potentially farm workers. As you move up, uh, thirty to fifty percent, maybe childcare, childcare workers, food preparation workers, landscaping workers, and so forth. By the time you get to eighty to hundred percent, we have nurses and plumbers. Uh, and this is the interesting one. The only profession identified a hundred percent to hundred and twenty is analyst. And I haven't met anybody who self identifies as an analyst, so if anybody knows one, uh, I'd be curious just to meet them, but um. And then above a hundred and twenty percent lawyers and managers. Those gives you, I you know, we're not necessarily putting names to the professions and more importantly, you know, the family situations to this, but this gives you an idea of all these people. Work in the city. All these people are contributors to the to the community, and how are we going to provide housing for all these people? The care, the the city council has taken uh, actions already to sort of work. Start to work on that, and that's what the Housing Action Plan was that the council approved in two thousand and twenty one. The Housing Action Plan, number one, will inform how we develop our our comprehensive plan. In the comprehensive plan, there are a number of elements. The housing element is the one that we're really gonna be focusing on. Uh, what we need to provide, where we need to provide, and and how we're gonna provide it. Um, as well as the capital facilities, which is gonna be how are we gonna pay for the infrastructure to support it? And the land use is. How we deal with the density? How do we deal with the mixture of uses and all that? The Housing Action Plan also guides all the implementation strategies. This is taking policy and turning it into action. So on one hand, we have development regulations that cover the range of uses from single family to multifamily and everything in between. Uh, it establishes our infrastructure spending priorities, our permitting processes, and that includes. Everything from paying attention to how long it takes a permit to be processed. Um, uh, what are our requirements? Are there too much? Are there too little? Fee structures, in addition to that, housing programs such as the things that we are trying to do through the Regional Housing Authority. Last item I wanted to touch on in terms of the snapshot is our employment. Uh, in two thousand and seventeen, this is the most current number we have from Thurston Regional Planning Council. We had a slightly over twenty seven thousand uh, jobs within the city. Even with COVID, we're looking at going probably above thirty seven thousand. Uh, so the good thing to keep in mind with the employment is we we have a really balanced. Uh, community in the sense that we're not a bedroom community. Uh, we have a lot of people who are coming to live and. Work and also use commercial services. That's a great balance to have, and that's something definitely we want to preserve as we as we look forward to uh, issues in the update. So what does this growth mean for the issue for city services? Because the city is providing services to the public. First of all, any increases in population, housing, and employment means to increase need for services that include on the transportation side. Uh, roads, road capacity. How are you gonna drive? How who's gonna, you know, how fast you can get there, transit? Pedestrian access in terms of sidewalks and paths, bike facilities, all of those things are need to be growing to match the to the required growth. Solid waste obviously deals with increasing capacity for garbage and recycling and for those facilities that serve those kinds of things. So. Uh, if we have a recycling center, you know, or we need to expand it, we need to think about where those things could be potentially located and and make sure we allow for that. Water, sewer, stormwater, we're all paying attention to number one, how in terms of water, how how we're getting our supply. And how we're getting the water to new uses. And so that means. Pipes, pump stations, and everything else, maintaining pressure and so forth. Similar concepts with sewer and stormwater. In terms of parks, police, fire, libraries, and schools, it comes down to facilities and staffing. Uh, where are we gonna put everyone who's going to, you know, up front in terms of our parks and recreational facilities? And how are we going to have the staff to serve them, say, through recreational programs? Same kind of thought process that needs to go through for how we provide our police and fire services. So the general periodic update process is a five step process. We are right now in step one. Which is engaging the community. We'll talk a little bit about what that means here in a moment. Uh, this engage the community really goes throughout the entire process. It just starts in step one. Uh, we're also working right now on step two, which is gathering and analyzing data. Uh, we are starting the process in early twenty four about evaluating the policies. Uh, and also the process for revising those policies. And then finally. At the end of twenty four, our intent is to review and update the regulations as well. So we're doing. A lot of things all at once. This is a slide basically showing what the best time for community input is. This is, we get a a constant question. I'm sure the council gets the question when there's a specific development project that comes into the city. Uh, and there are concerns with it. What kind of input and what kind of things could be discussed? With the periodic update, this is really the the greatest time for the council and the community to provide input on. The hows and whys of development, what it looks like, where it's located, all that kind of stuff. This is, this is the opportunity to to do that. Because under state law, there are restrictions. Once we start to get into review for individual permits under state law. Uh, under vesting and so forth, for the ability to the council and the community to provide specific input on things. So, for example, when we're reviewing a preliminary plat for a a new housing development or we're approving a conditional use permit for a new use. Uh, that's a quasi traditional process through our hearing examiner, and there's an opportunity for public input. But it's a very constrained level of input, meaning that it has to be focused exactly on the conditions of that project and so forth. And then administrative permits like building permits are by far the, you know, the least of the uh, ones that are able to be have community input to influence what it looks like. It's a. Do you meet it or not kind of thing?
So Brad, a question?
Sure, I apologize, Commissioner.
Yes, so we were discussing food sharing and and changing our codes or updating our codes. Uh, several weeks ago, so this would be a perfect opportunity to do that, correct? uh several weeks ago. So this would be a perfect opportunity to do that, correct?
It would be something that we could certainly consider as part of the development code update process. Where we're gonna, we'll be covering a number of things as part of that process, but that is something that we can certainly look at.
Thanks, Brad.
So engagement with the community, first of all, is intended to provide the community and also the stakeholders. And by stakeholders, it could be everything from the school district or the port or particular interest groups with meaningful opportunities to participate in the update and to be able to participate throughout that process. Uh, we have a community engagement plan that is posted to our project website uh that didn't devise the various tactics, strategies, and platforms that we're going to be using to informing and soul with the community throughout the process. And also, we really want to emphasize that the engagement process is going to be a very flexible thing. And it needs to be uh flexible because we want to be able to take advantage of events and opportunities that come up that we didn't necessarily see when we put the, the plan itself together. So first of all, starting with the periodic update webpage, uh, we have a uh periodic update email, uh complan at CI townwater dot WA dot US, which is uh goes to our long-range planning department. Uh, it's for any kind of input, any kind of questions, uh, you can direct people to that. Uh, and that's what we'll be using to track and, and, and manage our community input through the process. We also have a, uh, a specific website, our twenty twenty-five complan, which is part of the city website, where we have posted to date all the documents, schedules, and meetings information related to the periodic update uh is on that webpage. So for those council members who are not aware of this, uh, the planning commission and the general government committee have really started the deep dive into the update, starting in about August. All of the materials that they've been discussing, all of the elements they've been reviewing and, and, and thinking about on the presentations and so forth are all posted there. They're also on that website or all the guidance materials the state has put together about how to update the particular uh things. So for example, the, the state has published about five or six different guidance documents related to housing, all of which you, things that we're going to be referring to as part of the update. But all those things are posted there. If you or any of you uh interested members of the community want to see those, uh, they're all there as well. If there's something that you have a question about and you don't see it there, please, again, just reach out to us using the email. And if you're curious on, you want to look at the current comprehensive plan, I've included the link there in, in the presentation as well. Uh, in terms of keeping this council uh it abreast of what's happening throughout the uh, the periodic update, uh, we're going to be using primarily the general government committee as our means for communicating with the council. Uh, we will have opportunities to meet with the whole council as part of, of various discussions. But uh, we wanted to use the general government committee as a way of making sure that as we're going through the update and proposing changes and so forth, the council, it, we has an idea of what's happening and can offer suggestions. Are we on track? Are we, you know, need to consider other issues as we're doing that? The community will also be notified of key meetings and open houses uh throughout our whole communications package from the, the update webpage, our social media, uh, email newsletters and so forth. And we also have an interested contact party list that if any, if you are aware of anybody that we think that you think should be receiving notifications, please send them our way and we'll make sure they're included on that list. There is three phases to the update. I'm just going to hit these fairly quickly. First phase is what we're in currently, uh, summer and the fall of twenty twenty-three, community engagement and review. Uh, we are, again, as I mentioned, we're doing data collection and community outreach. Uh, we're going to be working, we are working on our gap analysis, which is essentially looking at what we have now, comparing it against the new state requirements and also local uh issues that we want to address and identifying things that we need to update and change. Uh, we are also in the process of either, uh, we, we've made application for three different grants from the state uh and dealing with, first of all, the general update. Uh, there's a general update grant that we're going to use a portion of those funds to update the, the transportation plan, another portion to update the data set for the economic development plan. Uh, we have a grant that we just received, an announcement that we were awarded for seventy-five thousand from the state uh to deal with what they is called bill housing. Uh, essentially, that's the everything between single family all the way up to multifamily, that range of missing um housing that wasn't really built in the past twenty to thirty-five years. Uh, there's a big push to sort of expand the housing types and how we can do that. So we're going to use those funds uh to help us try to integrate even further how those are occurring. And lastly, there is a large uh climate grant uh that will be funding the climate element update as part, as part of the process, as well as some other activities related to that. Plan development is going to start this fall and go through the fall of twenty-four. Uh, community outreach will definitely be continuing during that time. Uh, we are going to propose a new format to the comprehensive plan to make it a shorter, more usable document. Uh, we're going to be sending that to the Department of Commerce for their blessing before we go full bore into filling out the details. And then we're going to be um just having individual element development briefings starting in January and running through October, where we're going to be proposing uh various changes to the existing elements and discussions around policy and so forth. We'll do a similar process for the development code at the same time. Um, and we'll, we'll, those will be kind of overlapping as we, as we go through the process. Phase three will be the, the legislative adoptive process. Uh, there'll be formal ordinances. Uh, see if a review will occur at that time. We are working right now on, uh, we have some ideas on how we might want to roll out the ordinances uh in terms of uh public hearing and uh process with the council. Uh, we don't necessarily, I think our schedule calls for like one meeting, one hearing. Uh, what we may have, we, I think we're limited to one hearing by our, our local and state law. But we can keep the hearing open, so we have a number of different things, a lot of things to talk about. Uh, so we want to make sure we give the property or time and opportunity for people to provide comment. Uh, the council member Kathy, you had a question?
Yes, um, so I think it's probably back about um four slides or so. You were saying about how we're, you're going to concentrate some of this information and have, uh, I think you have that they're planning commission and city council. But you said that, uh, you know, the general government in, you know, for the general government will be handling this as kind of the input place and the flow into the council.
Right. Our, our intent is to overwhelm the general government committee with paper. And by that, that'll take care of three of the seven members of the council, and we think it's an easier battle at that point.
Yeah, yeah, and you would pick three good people to overwhelm. And um, I, the reason I'm going back to that is that I think in what you have up there, you just have city council. And many, many of people who are interested in this kind of thing and, and so forth, they look to see who is on what committee. So somewhere, I think it's important to put general government committee.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think it would, if there are people who really want to talk about it or whatever, they could email us or whatever directly.
Right. And I, then thank you for that reminder. So the, the, the presentation is kind of did shorthand for this process.
Yeah.
On the update uh website, uh, we post both of the materials that we are presenting to both the general government committee, which is going to be the primary committee that's going to be hearing and discussing these issues, as well as uh the, the, the full council. There may be some things that the uh Public Works Committee will hear, especially regarding the capital facilities planning uh and so forth, but we'll make sure that those things are properly noticed. So the community.
Thank you. That's, that's good. Not that we want anything else coming our way, but we're trying to be, um, you know, helpful and thorough, so you kind of give us less work.
Yeah. And again, also, the, the planning commission is also going to serve a very important role. And so the, if the community wants to provide input, they have a, a number of options. Uh, planning commission would be my first recommendation. Uh, number one, because the planning commission is, is really going to be in the weeds on a lot of these things. And that's where I, we're definitely going to be uh having opportunity for good public comment. General Government Committee, obviously, and also the City Council through that process. Just want to call attention to some of the Commerce guidance materials. It's uh on their website here in the presentation. Um, i- if you have specific questions, either as a member of the council or a member of the community, uh, again, please reach out to us and we can help you with that. Some immediate next steps uh through the end of this year, I just want to call everyone's attention to. Uh, and this is only the council, this doesn't include what we're doing uh with the planning commission. Uh, General Government Committee will be uh discussing the climate and conservation elements. Uh, first of all, the climate element again is the new element. We'll talk a little bit about what's going to be in that. Uh, we're going to talk about what the current conservation element has, policies and so forth. And we're also going to be presenting uh an outline of the required housing needs allocation, which I, we talked to about at the beginning of this presentation. Um, the, uh, what, what do we expect that the work group will be finishing its work and will be starting presentations uh to all the councils and the, and the commission in, in the county. Uh, and then the, the county commissioners will make a decision on, ultimately on, on the allocation method that's chosen. Um, we have a joint work session with the council as a whole and the planning commission scheduled for December twelfth. Uh, the purpose of this is really to get the planning commission and the council in the same area, uh, room. Uh, to first of all, talk through the twenty twenty-four work program. Uh, but essentially, since the twenty-four work program, for the most part, is going to be the periodic update, uh, this is going to be a good time to sort of do our transition to uh the next phase of that, of the periodic update process. In December, the General Government Committee will be talking about the economic development plan and the lands for public purposes, which are uh our water sewer and stormwater facilities and police and fire and utilities, which are private utilities, think electricity and cable. Um, and that concludes my presentation. Again, if you have any questions, you, my email address is here, full address and telephone number. Uh, we will be tracking and publishing any formal comments that we receive during the process, so we, we, everyone can see those.
Councilmember Swartho.
Okay, thank you, Brad, for the presentation. Um, so I was thinking the, the uh, information that right now that like the planning commission has been reviewing and then general government, is this, are they looking at the old documents? Are they, um, old packet or from the old plan? Or is this things that have already been suggested? Is it new? I apologize, we're not looking at the general government packets uh beforehand, before I asked that question. But I was just curious um what the packet looks like. And then, and uh my second question is, you know, how to be prepared? Are we going to be looking at that much? Um, the package step as well, how can we be prepared uh for our part um as when we start to address this?
So, uh, thank you for the question, Councilmember Swartho. So both the planning commission and the general committee are looking at, first of all, the current documents. So they have an understanding of what has, what the, what the intent was in two thousand sixteen, what the issues were. And most importantly, the focusing on the policies and, and uh the goals, policies, and actions in that plan. We also are using the opportunity to, to walk through uh the changes that have occurred in state law, which are pretty numerous and talk through what we'll need to address as part of the larger update process. So it's really sort of a, here's where we were, here's what we need to start to address. So we, we start the process by the twenty-four individual uh element updates of hopefully, people will have an understanding what we needed to do and, and now we can start talking about how we're going to do it. And in terms of the council, I think uh, we'll look to the general government committee members to give us input on when they think specific issues should go to the full council as part of this update process. We haven't necessarily scheduled additional meetings yet with the full council for work session or so forth. But I think, and I'm just going to throw this out here, housing and how we deal with where we handle additional density, if we need to do that, all those kinds of things are things that I think we probably want to have more input in a broader discussion with the council as part of the process.
Well, and again, I just, I, I understand from the general government people that they receive large packets. So I was, are we going to be anticipated? I just want to be able to like get up ahead of the reading if it's going to be a large packet. Um, if there's any way we could be prepared, if that's what I meant, yeah. How are, will we be looking at that? I just want to be prepared and, and be ready to go.
You know, and actually, that's a, that's a good discussion point for the joint meeting with the planning commission in December. Uh, because I think there are things that are, are, we need to focus your, your attention on more than others at this time. And I definitely think things dealing with the affordable housing requirements and all of those kinds of things are, are where I would focus attention first. Uh, and then climate obviously would be another very close second to that. And with those guidance materials that Commerce has put together, I think those provide a really good uh start to sort of like the general things that we need to do. And then as we need to, we can, we can fine tune that and, and focus that up.
Councilmember Altosir.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I, I would just also add that, you know, if, if you, anyone sees an agenda and you think that you want to sit in on the general government committee for that meeting, please, as always, just feel free to do so. Um, we do, would need you to alert admin staff, because if there's four of us, then that's a, a quorum of the council. So you would have to, I think, notice that under the O PMA, if there's four of us there. I, I think, I could be wrong about that, but so I, I'd say feel free to, to join us if, if you are interested in, in the particular areas we're discussing, always feel free. We just need to notice it properly to do so.
Councilmember Della.
Thank you, Mayor. The one thing I was thinking was, Eileen, with your question and Brad, is like, I know I'm going to weigh more heavily on you, Eileen, for the elements, for the climate and stuff like that, because you represent us and those applicable committee assignments. So I guess like with the housing, I rely a lot on Joan and Michael for what they're hearing, right, and that future work. So I guess I would look to each council member of what, how you're representing us on your committee assignments that I would expect more from you, like to help guide us, right, because of what you're learning and hearing. So I guess that's what I'm thinking is we all have a piece of this, so we can all contribute to what we're assigned, like with Peter and transportation, right? So all those different elements, I think they all come together, so we all have a part of this. And Eileen, they're, they're amazing packets. I mean, Brad puts them together really well. It's great nighttime reading. It's just fluid. It's just a fluid document.
And we could always add more pictures.
Any other questions?
Yes, um, I think Leah is absolutely right. You know, they're just, this is not any one, you know, committee or council member or anything. This is really a, a joint effort that we're going to have here. Everybody's going to have to contribute. And like Angela mentioned, you know, the the food systems piece of it, that is a new, a new thing that we didn't, we didn't talk about last time we did this plan. And um, the climate really runs through everything too. Um, so um, I don't want to put that all on, on Eileen, but um, it, we all know that. So that'll have to be discussed probably all along the way. And the other thing I wanted to say is Eileen needs to quit hanging out with Lieta so much during this process. Because it's Lieta who's always concerned about how many pages something is. So I would suggest that you cut back on your Lieta time. I mean, you'll be more calm about it.
Councilmember Swartho.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Kathy. Um, I guess I realize that it won't, that the general government or the planning commission won't, I mean, you're not the, that's not the end-all um that'll be part of this, I guess. Um, because I guess I look at this, I get, um, like how we've done the budget, you know, we're all part of it. So I, I guess that's what I was asking, um, knowing that it will come to us eventually, um, you know, how to be prepared for it. And I, I, um, like, uh, council member Altosir's too, that, you know, to go back and read uh what's happened in the general government. So again, I just want to be prepared. So I appreciate everyone's suggestions. Thanks.
Yeah, and very quickly, I just want to say that the, the council has done a lot of work already. Uh, and what, you know, for example, the Climate Action Plan, Urban Forestry Plan, uh, the Housing Action Plan, et cetera, et cetera. All of those things are going to be drawn into this update. So the, the work is there. Uh, the policies, to be honest, are, you can, they are in good shape. They need to be much more active. Uh, but we're not starting from ground zero. So that's, that's a good thing.
Any other questions?
I just want to thank Brad for um all of his work. And uh, and part of the reason I want to thank him is because these are, these are really big consequential things. And he's very patient with, uh, you know, our questions and explanations. And he, he presents excellent material. So Brad, I want to thank you. And if there was an award for it, I, I'd give it to you.
Wait until twenty-five, but thank you.
All right.
Yeah, th- this, this is a, a long, ongoing process. It does, this does not happen overnight. So. Yeah, this this is a long, ongoing process. It does, this does not happen overnight, so. All right, if there's no other questions, I Brad, we can release Brad, so he can go to the planning commission meeting next. So uh, his night is not finished quite yet. Uh, next item is Together Town Water Community Schools Program Final Report and city administrator Parks will be presenting, and I believe that we have someone from Together here also.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, councilmembers and everyone in attendance. So um, this item is uh based on a an agreement that the city entered into last December with Together to help support their community schools program. Uh, that program provides support to students in the Town Water School District, you know, helping them to remain and be successful uh in school, and that includes um helping them to remain housed and fed in particular. Um, the agreement was for a not to exceed amount of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, that money was ARPA funds um, uh, uh that was utilized to provide that one-time support. And we have with us Sierra Abrams tonight uh from Together. She's the uh community schools director, and she's here to provide a final report to the council for your consideration. So Sierra, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, everyone. It's awesome to be here in this virtual room with you all. Um, I'm going to share my screen for the presentation. Okay. All right, is it looked at to everybody?
Yes, it does.
Okay, awesome. So, yeah, like um Lisa was saying, you know, we're so thankful for the contribution the city provided for us this year. Um, with a hundred thousand dollars, and this is uh a reflection on um, the past school year, um, so partially the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. And I know that attached to the agenda was the report that I submitted to you all. That's all written. This will be a little bit of like a bite-sized snapshot of that information. Um, yeah, so again, my name is Sierra Abrams, Ayushiva Pronouns, and I'm the community schools director for Together. And what is community schools? I know a lot of you know this, but I thought just to re-ground in what we do, as Lisa was saying, um all the things that she said, and then this is saying that the community school strategy transforms a school into a place where educators, local community members, families and students work together to strengthen conditions for student learning and healthy development. As partners, we organize in and out of school resources, supports and opportunities so that young people thrive. This is our team. Um, this is the biggest team we've ever had. Um, so this is really exciting. This is all of our names from left to right. Um, so you have Courtney, Diana, there's me, Paulette, Stephanie, and then Vanessa. Um, this is our whole Tomar Community Schools team at our office. These are where we are at currently with service sites, and so we have resource centers in the schools, and we have the managers, the community schools managers onsite at these schools. Um, working with students, working with families, meeting with families, um providing that uh that during the daytime school support. Um, we recently added Cascadia High School. I just want to note that. Uh, we've never had a full-time staff member there until February of this year. Um, so that's the alternative um school and it has about a hundred students, and there's quite a high need there, especially with unaccompanied homeless youth. And so we're really excited, and we've already seen like a big impact um having a full-time staff there. So our history, so we're almost ten years old in Tom Water. Um, Together has had a community schools program in Tom Water almost ten years, which is really blowing my mind. I'm really excited about that. Um, preparing for this presentation, I looked back on our budget um over those ten years, and we started with a budget of a hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and now our budget is six hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I think that just shows like the growth and investment from the city and the district and the community in this program, and it's really exciting. Um, our model has been that the school district contributes fifty percent, and then Together raises the other fifty percent. Um, obviously, the city contributes. Uh, we also have private foundation funders um and other grants from the state. Um, so that helps with that. And that model is um kind of the community schools model that we see nationwide is that we want to have the district and the city and state all be uh invested in the program, and that's how it can be successful. Um, for school year twenty-two, twenty-three, our numbers were that we case managed two hundred and thirty-seven students and their families. So that's um, not just a one-time connection. We um we define that as a long-term um, relationship, and that's, you know, pretty in-depth. Um, often we're meeting with people weekly or multiple times a week. Um, and then the number of students that we're seeing on a daily basis is much more than that, right? So students might be coming in for a snack. Uh, but that's not a case management. So this is, you know, more intensive than that. And then last year, we distributed hundred and ten thousand dollars in client assistance funds, so that includes rental assistance. So it was super fascinating to hear the presentation earlier earlier about the comprehensive plan in terms of housing. Um, because that's a lot of what we um, support families with. And of course, the city has in the past provided rental assistance for our program. So I know you all are like familiar with the work we do um in that realm. So the client assistance that we distribute also includes utilities or car repair or food support, clothes, any basic needs. Um, and then we had our annual golf tournament fundraiser in August, and we raised a net of twenty thousand dollars, which is our most successful ever. So that was great. Uh, so we appreciate your support in that, too. I know that the the city often uh is involved in that or comes up to golf, so we thank you. We also do community-wide events, and so these are events that um, are either open to the entire school district or even the entire county. And so this is the number of boxes of thanks. So we do in partnership with For the Love Foundation, um turkey baskets or boxes um for families in the Tom Water School District. And so that was almost two hundred turkeys, um and then adding up the number of individual family members that served, it was over a thousand. So I really like that number because I I think that really speaks to like how many people get fed from that. Um, so we're getting close to boxes of thanks again this year, and I think the number will be even higher. And then we brought back um our sports physicals, which we hadn't done since before COVID, and so we were able to do that in June in partnership with Providence Sports Medicine. Um, and we did eighty-one physicals for Tom Water School District um students. And then we did our immunization clinic with Thurston County Public Health and Social Services, and fifty students received immunizations from that. So that was back to school, anything that any immunizations that are required for school were available. Um, and at both the back-to-basics events, we have resource fairs um with community partners that also connect families to um food stamps or health insurance um and other other resources like that. Um, these are some social media posts with some stories. Um, there are stories included in the report that I sent you. Um, but one of these is around Cascadia, which um Cascadia saw its largest graduating class this year, which is um really monumental. Um, and many graduates credited the work of the community schools manager in helping them graduate. Um because Cascadia is small enough, each student has the opportunity to say a little something when they graduate and, you know, recognize people that um impacted them on their journey. And many of them did mention our program, which was, you know, we're very honored to have been in involved in that. And so um, that's one a success story. And then with this year, we were able to solicit a donation for a family to receive a car. It wasn't a brand-new car. It was a used car um that someone wanted to donate. We were able to get it to the family. Um, and they're often traveling to Seattle Children's Hospital, so having a reliable car um is incredibly significant. So I want to share that big success story. Um, so that's pretty life-changing for a family, as you all know. And then here's some social media. I really encourage you all, if you're on social media, to connect with us. We've been doing a lot more sharing of stories and sharing of partnerships um on our Instagram and our Facebook. Um, specifically for Tom Water Community Schools, we have our own social media, so definitely, you know, if you're into that, go look us up and see what we're up to. Um, yeah, that's what I had. I would welcome questions or thoughts or comments. Um, and if anyone wants me to like go back to another slide, I'm happy to do that.
Uh, councilmember Swartho.
Well, thank you for this report. I they tease me about numbers, but I really like numbers and I like this dashboard. It really does show. You know, um, really breaks out what you all have been doing, so I I really appreciate that. Um, I did have a question about the how, how do you determine which schools are served? Because it's not it I always thought it was like all the schools in Tom Water School, it looks like there's specific ones, and I was just what curious how you determine which schools um will receive, um, you know, will have a together person in that school.
Yeah, that's a great question. Um, thank you for asking it. So over the past ten years, we've shifted a lot. Things have looked really different. Um, I will say that we're really pushing to have someone at every school, and we're so close. We really only we're missing Bush, which is really important. It's a huge gap, and then Little Rock and Black Lake Elementary. And so we're really close. We could probably fulfill that with like one more person. Um, and really, it's looked like, looking at the data, like you said, numbers of the need. And so part of that is informed by what are the um McKinney Vento homeless family numbers um per school. Um, and then also over time, like level of partnership. And so a couple of years ago, I know that you all heard about this. Um and that's partially why we came to you asking for the contribution that you made this year is that the school district, you know, went through a budget crisis and had to pull back a lot of their funding. And so we did have to make some tough calls based on data and relationship that you know, we didn't want to have to do. And so I'm I'm glad we're getting back to a place where our focus is like, how do we get to every school? As opposed to having to like make the tough calls of like we are on a skeleton crew and like where do we focus our energy? Um, but that's what informed those decisions was like where are the most homeless families? Where do we have really good relationships? You know, um, yeah, that's how that worked, but hopefully we'll get to every school soon.
Councilmember Kathy.
Yes, uh, first of all, could we take down the thing so we could see everybody?
Sure.
Yeah. Not that I don't like looking at it, but I I think conversation is better when we're all seeing each other, that's all.
There we go.
Great, great. We can see you that way also. Um, one of the things I wanted to ask is what are the then other pieces of uh what Together is doing? Because I think we contribute to another piece of uh of the program. And uh, community schools and uh could you tell us a little bit about the and is sort of we get the sort of whole togetherness?
Yeah, so the other program um that operates in Tom Water is Host Homes. Um, and I know that Tammy presented to you all a couple of months ago. Um, and so that's placing unaccompanied homeless youth and families in the community. Um, and so we've housed a couple Tom Water students so far. We're still in our pilot phase, and so we're going to grow more. Um, but we, you know, community schools and host homes work so closely together, and that was one of the other reasons we really wanted to be at Cascadia High School because of the number of unaccompanied youth that attend that school so that we could help reach, so we could do more outreach to them if they were interested in the Host Homes program. Um, which you know, we've had some success in at least doing that outreach. It is like a process, obviously. We're not, Host Homes isn't like emergency housing that can just like turn around and house a young person. Um, it does take some time, which I hope Tammy talked about, but yeah, so that's the end.
Also, I wanted to ask in your uh program, do you do anything that is academic? Are you helping in any way uh with that kind of thing, you know? Coaching or mentoring or whatever um academically?
Um, not so much like with academics specifically. I mean, certainly all of our community schools managers, especially with the older students are often in mentorship roles with them in terms of like, what are your goals? Like, do you want to go to college or what's happening after high school? Um, we have seen an uptick in students needing academic support, like tutoring. Um, so we have been able to use some of our flexible funds to support that when paying for their own tutoring, like at Sullivan Learning Center, for example, is just inaccessible to them. Um, so that has risen. Um, but in terms of like academic support, you know, we don't do that piece, but we will like figure out how we can get them academic support. Yeah.
There's a lot of these students that come from homes where there's stress and, you know, maybe food insecurity or you know, they're trying to find, you're you're trying to find them a place to be. They um, that part kind of suffers. And there's been a study done that students that come from schools like that, there are some of the ones that their reading levels are really down. And oh, I didn't know if there was some place in what you were doing for that that's what I meant by kind of that type of thing for, you know, academic stuff, if that was anywhere in there, because even just that one thing is a big is a big deal. And it's, thank you for the report about the graduation. That's such a big step for young people like that, so.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good work.
Councilmember Jefferson.
Yes, um, thank you. Thank you so much for the work that you do. My question for you is, students don't want to be labeled. So a lot of them might need help, but they're um ashamed to ask for food. So how, what do services look like at the schools? Do they come to you? Do you find them? Do you have a food closet or a sharing closet where they can unanimously go and get the food? So walk me through what that looks like.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so at our high school, so each school has we have an office, um, a resource center, and at the high school specifically, Black Hills, Tom Water and Cascadia. Um, you know, it's a lot of self-referral, so students will just go to the resource center on their own. Um, it's a little different, you know, elementary school level, and even at some other middle, they will go to the resource center themselves, but um, really what our community schools managers are so good at is like you know, building relationships with the students so that they want to come to the resource center because it's a fun place to be, like not having it be like oh, you are in need of this and having that stigma and that that shame, which is very real, especially for high school students. Um, and so, you know, we'll have things that, you know, fun snacks, like popcorn is huge at Black Hills. And so, you know, things that they want to come and enjoy, and then that staff person is talking with them, not necessarily asking deep questions right away, but just building relationship, asking about their day. Um, and then sometimes that's all it is, like students just want that connection, and then really over time, like maybe it takes a week or more even or, you know, much longer. Um, and then they might open up about like, actually, you know, my family's really struggling, or I'm couch surfing right now. And so um, making that as like low barriers possible. Um, and then having it not be like, oh, that's the place where people go when they need something, you know, having it be not ha- not that energy. Um, and yeah, and then, you know, a big part also is we work really closely with the school staff, the counselors, teachers and admin. So that they will refer students to us, you know, if they um are aware of needs um that the students and families are having. So there's also that piece too, where students don't have to come directly and advocate for themselves. If there's a safe person at the school, they're already talking to, that person knows to suggest like, you know, hey, do you want to go talk to the together person? You know, something like that. So that that's the other bulk of how we interact with students.
Okay, um, I know you still have the the backpack program where you fill the backpack up with food for the the kids, right? And you partner with the Thurston County Food Bank, or are you providing that food yourself?
Yeah, so at the elementary level, it's through the Thurston County Food Bank. They have the for kids program that does the elementary level. And then for the middle and high school level in Tom Water, it's All Kids Win provides the food bags. Um, so we partner with both of them to distribute food bags during the school year. And then in the summertime, we partner just with All Kids Win to distribute the food bags through the summer, so there's no gap um in families getting the bags. So, yeah, we work with both of them. We don't do our own bags, yeah.
Are you are you finding that the need is increasing? How do you see that need? We know it's increasing, but is it increasing? We know it's increasing, but is it increasing dramatically? What do the numbers look like?
I, I would say, yeah, I, I would say it's increasing dramatically. I, a big shift that happened maybe in the past two months-ish. Um, I don't remember the exact date, but there was a, a drop off in um, like EBT support. And so we were encountering a lot of families who went from getting a few hundred dollars every month to getting like fifty dollars a month in their EBT card. And so that has really made um, the need for food skyrocket in the community that we're seeing. And so we were being asked a lot and we were able to provide um, as much as we could in terms of like grocery cards. Um, that's huge. I mean, grocery and gas cards, as you can imagine. So yeah, in the past couple of months since we've seen that big dip and my understanding is that was a lot of like COVID emergency funding ended. And so they weren't getting like extra, but really it's what they needed. And so, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you so much for all the work that you're doing for our kids. We appreciate you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Kathy, did you have another question?
One other, one other thing, Sierra, sorry. Um, I, I want to know if um. How the community can uh, join community schools by um, making any kinds of donations or whatever. Uh, I know monetarily, that's not even a question, but uh, but other ways that uh, that the community could contribute. That would help your programming.
Yeah, thank you for that question. It was perfect. So um, starting next month, November 3rd. We are part of the Give Local campaign um, through the Community Foundation of South Sound. So that's going to be our big push. Um, for contributions to our SWIFT fund. So their SWIFT fund is named after our founding executive director, Earl Swift. And it's also aptly named because our goal with that fund is to swiftly meet student and family needs. And so that is just an amazing resource, like that's where we are able to buy a gas card or pay for a tutoring session. You know, just that really flexible, direct client assistance, um, that is hard to get other funding for. And so, yeah, I would definitely appreciate, you know, look at our social media, look at our website when we do give local, encourage people. Um, any amount is really helpful. We're getting a lot of, uh, we're going to be matched um, by the Help Us Move In Foundation. Um, so they're going to match up to ten thousand dollars um, of the funds we raise. And so even if someone can only give five dollars, ten dollars, like it's all very appreciated. So that starts November 3rd until the 17th of November. So it goes for a few weeks and a lot of other nonprofits are a part of it. And so it benefits all of us. Um, but yeah.
Anything in supplies or, or food or anything like that? I mean, uh, clothes, anything like that? You mentioned that you help young people with those things. Do you take donations for that or do you use these funds for it?
Yeah, um, we definitely take donations. Um, food is great. Hygiene supplies are great too, like toothbrushes, toothpaste, um, deodorant. It's always great to be able to provide that to students. Um, the menstrual products is also really big. We did a drive of menstrual products for them to be stocked in the bathrooms at the middle schools, because that wasn't a thing, um, but it was needed. Um, clothes is kind of tricky, like we will take clothes. But as you can imagine, like if a student wants clothes, they usually want something really specific. And we want to get them new things, right? Um, but if you have like good, warm, like mittens or hats or sweaters, that kind of stuff is always really great. Um, socks, you know, underwear, brand new things, but yeah, definitely reach out to me. If anyone has anything to donate, you can always ask them. Will you take this?
Okay, alright. Good, good. We have very generous people in this community, so.
Yeah.
You always want to ask.
Great. Well, thank you for the update. Is there any other questions or comments? Yeah, we really appreciate it and, and um, it does help our community tremendously. So we really appreciate what you do.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate your partnership and I love coming and being able to talk to you all.
Great. Alright, so we'll move to the next agenda item, which is the 2024 Draft Legislative Agenda. And uh, Austin Ramirez will be presenting that.
Good evening. I'm, I'm some trouble getting my video started. One second. I apologize. It looks like my, there we go. And joining me tonight is also Kelsey Hulse with Strategies 360. I am going to share my screen. Is our draft legislative agenda visible for everyone?
Yes.
Perfect, okay. Appreciate the time tonight, Mayor and Council. Um, Kelsey and I want to give you an overview of what our proposed legislative priorities are for the upcoming session. Uh, and gather input, feedback, uh, questions, discuss anything from council. It will look very similar to last year's with some key adjustments, uh, depending on the, the funding we're looking for. So we'll, we'll go through that. Just to start off the top and with what our priority is with the most important ask we had last year and this year. We are again looking to the state for funding to support our habitat conservation plan. Um, this year, we're looking for two million dollars to help us acquire uh, land that would be converted to prairie and preserved in, in perpetuity. Um, I'll let Kelsey talk a little bit about the Climate Commitment Act uh, in just a moment. Um, but I, I do want to just note the, the support we need from the state and from other partners. And really the need to acquire mitigation land uh, has only increased since last year. Uh, in order to, for, for our HCP to be successful, we really need to hit the ground running in terms of mitigation land. Uh, and have that in place even before adoption. Um, John Don used to use the quote, it's like a chicken and the egg issue, but less delicious. And so I've continued to use that one uh, in his absence. I don't know if he appreciates it, but you know, it's a good way of describing. We're, we're stuck in a, a cycle that um, has just got us in a bit of a holding period until we can acquire land. Um, Kelsey, can I pass it over to you to talk a little bit about the Climate Commitment Act and why we're focusing on carbon sequestration this year?
Sure. Thanks, Austin. Um, so as many of you may have seen. There have been a variety of headlines and a variety of public information that's been made about the revenues that have been generated by the Climate Commitment Act. Greenhouse gas auction. So we've, the state has generated about 1.3 billion so far with a fourth um, auction set for December. And so those are the revenues that we will be targeting with our request to fund a um, habitat conservation. Habitat Conservation Program, but that has additional benefits for carbon sequestration. So there's quite a bit of um, good science out there, some good studies that we can cite. About the carbon sequestration or carbon sink potential of prairie land relative to um, whether it be forests. Or um, tidelands or various other ways to do that. And so that's what we will be um. Uh, requesting the funding for is to uh, fund a project that will effectively sequester carbon. And also provide the additional benefit of habitat creation for um, the purposes of the Habitat Conservation Plan.
Yeah, thank you, Kelsey. And in years past, we've, we focused on the benefits to the species and the habitat. We've focused on the economic development benefits, especially last year. And so this is, is just another layer of value that a successful habitat conservation plan will provide. Um, particularly as we, we look at climate change and how to combat that effectively in our region. The uh, question from Councilmember Al Tazzer.
Thanks. Um, Austin and Kelsey, we, we, I had emailed maybe like a couple of months ago. Um, about. Carbon sequestration on prairie lands and whether it's possible to sort of bank the fact. That if you're not developing those lands, then it's sequestered in perpetuity. And whether or not you can then take the fact that you are sequestering the carbon permanently to sell credits. On the CCA auction. Did, do we ever look into that on whether that's viable? Like if we use two million dollars to sequester carbon, can that then be sort of a revolving revenue stream? Or account to then fund and fuel future purchases of additional land? So that we can have a more sustainable way to try to, you know, how, how, how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? But you know, two million dollars here, a little bit more revenue there. And that's, you know, we have a lot of land we're going to have to purchase and, and. Not develop in perpetuity to make sure that we can keep track of the gopher and stuff. So I guess I'm just sort of curious about that, whether there was anything there to that idea.
Yeah, and thank you for, for sharing that. We did some initial research on it and it's still on our, our list of long-term funding strategies. Uh, one of the things we, we learned looking at some of the other examples around the country is just the scale of their prairie is much larger than ours. Um, and so their ability to monetize that carbon sequestration was just greater than ours would be. Not that we wouldn't be able to deal with ours. Um, I think we would just need to do some additional research on um, financially. If it's, if it's feasible to go down that path. We are though, um, you know, if we acquire prairie lands, um, you know, the, those will create credits. That can then be sold uh, to the development market. Um, and not just simply for the, the sequestration benefits, but because of the habitat conservation permit and plan and how that works. Um, so there is an ability to, to do that. Uh, as long as we can identify some funding to purchase, purchase prairie.
Yeah, you, you're talking about selling gopher credits as opposed to selling the idea of. You can bank these carbon sequestration credits, right?
Yeah, and I um, also sort of just on our list of, of questions to continue to consider is if we can layer that. Right, is there duplicate benefit there that we can, we can get?
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Kathy?
Yes, I, I just wondered if this um. Area we're talking about is just, because we just recently had a discussion about our endangered species that are on prairie land. And has to do with the Bush Prairie Conservation Plan. Is this part of it at all or are these two separate things?
No, these are one and the same. Yeah. So the, the areas we would be looking to purchase for prairie restoration um, are directly because of the, the Bush Prairie Habitat Preservation. Conservation Plan.
And so these lands we're talking about uh, in this legislative piece is uh, has to do with. Where on the prairie or whatever that the, that the frogs and the larks and the so forth are, are located?
Yes, this, this ask specifically is for the gopher. Um, because we're, we're looking at, you know, purchasing land we would preserve as prairie. Um, if we can get wetlands as well to support the, the frog, that would be great. But the, the focus of this ask is, is prairie for the gopher.
So the, not for the things that fly?
We are looking at if, if the prairie is large enough, uh, if the acreage is large enough, we think that can benefit the birds as well. But the, the pressure on gopher habitat is really the greatest stressor right now. And so that's why we're prioritizing uh, prairie at this point.
Thank you.
I think I saw the questions. Go ahead.
Uh, I'm going to move on to some of the other topics on our legislative agenda. The next one we have is the East Street uh, Connection, um, which for any redevelopment opportunity within the brewery, old or new brewery. And really the Capitol Boulevard corridor uh, will be critical. Um, just the amount of traffic this would take off Capitol Boulevard and divert. Um, to really help us turn it into the more walkable, retail-friendly corridor that's been called out in the Capitol Boulevard Master Plan. Uh, I'm sorry, Capitol Boulevard Corridor Plan and also uh, the brewery redevelopment plans. Um, this is a really important project that continues to be at the top of our, um, our funding list for transportation. And then our next transportation uh, project is the Tom Water Boulevard I-5 Interchange. Um, I think we're all feeling the growing pains a little bit of, of Tom Water. And um, being able to provide the infrastructure to handle that growth will continue to be critical. Um, this is clearly tied to economic development as well. So much of that is being able to provide the infrastructure. Um, that attracts employment and investment and helps retain jobs in our area. And then we've carried over the Wash Dot Regional Office's redevelopment ask uh, from last year. For, for this upcoming session, this is really a continued engagement and, and education topic for our representatives. Um, we're continuing to work with, with Wash Dot on the opportunity to purchase that site. They are continuing to, to do some work on the site to get it ready for surplus. We also have been lucky enough uh, to have been awarded a grant from Ecology, an Integrated Planning Grant to um, do some due diligence and planning on this site. So the timing is working out well. We won't have a financial ask of the state this session. Um, but likely next session, the timing could work out well for that. Um, this is a redevelopment opportunity. We continue to be really excited about, uh, given its importance to the corridor. And the lack of challenges it will have in comparison to the brewery site. Um, so we think it's just a much more approachable redevelopment opportunity. And a reminder there, we aren't looking to be the developer as the city. We're looking to partner with uh, a developer or multiple that share. Um, the community's vision for the site. Uh, shared legislative agenda, we're continuing to work with those partners. Um, we just convened with them. Uh, we don't have a finalized shared legislative agenda yet. Uh, that'll happen later in the year. Um, our priority that we are, are putting forth for the region is the Bush Prairie Carbon Sequestration Ask. Um, so it's uh, our priority for both agendas, ours and the, the regional shared legislative agenda. Uh, we continue to highlight two major statewide policy issues. One is the 1% property tax cap that continues to be discussed. Um, also the extension of TDDs or, or transportation benefit districts. Um, we're hoping to, uh, to have that um, have that be renewed. And that's not just an issue we're facing, but a lot of communities are facing. We've also included the four AWC priorities uh, for this upcoming session. We track those closely. We tend to align with, with what their policy uh, priorities are. And so um, they're talking about recruiting public safety officers, um, the 1% property tax cap. Uh, infrastructure investments to continue and then also a focus on behavioral health resources becoming available. Um, so that's our draft agenda. I'm going to stop sharing so I can see everyone. Um, but happy to take any questions or discuss anything further.
Any questions? Councilmember Doha?
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Austin and Kelsey. How realistic do you think any of these will be knowing that it's a 30-day session?
It's a great question.
Um, if I could jump in, uh, 60 days, don't make it shorter than it is. And. I think it's fair to say that Tom Water has some pretty um, ambitious goals in the near term and in the long term. And that we're going to need a lot of help to get those things accomplished. And so the core goal around a lot of the things that um, have been identified on the legislative agenda are going to be socializing the projects this year. Right, so we're not, there's not going to be another transportation budget package this year. There's not going to be a new budget this year. It'll be a supplemental year. So we'll spend those 60 days trying to connect with as many decision makers as we can to make sure that when we do come back next year. With a specific ask around particularly those transportation packages or, excuse me, transportation pieces, that they know what's coming. That they are familiar with the project. It's not the first time they're hearing about it. They understand kind of what the goals are there. So I think it's, it's very realistic to use this session to introduce these ideas to folks. We aren't going to come away from the legislative session with funding, you know, packages for each of these items, certainly.
Thank you. I appreciate that because I think a lot of people don't understand like the expectations we get and the questions we get of like how realistic of what you can accomplish. Right, with competing agendas. So thank you.
Any other questions?
I have one.
Councilmember Kathy?
Um, Austin, are. Um, Austin, are, are we, hi, Kelsey. Uh, we had to mention both of you. I don't want to leave you out. Austin, are we, um. Are we in touch at all? Or where is, where is the situation with all these things that we're doing with the craft district and this transportation? Uh, project and so forth in communication at all with the owner of the, of the brewery?
Uh, Mr. Patel, are we talking about just, I just said that to clarify because there's so many owners involved.
Oh, I, I mean. Other, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we, we meet with him often, multiple times a year. We're in active discussions with him often. You know, we know his staff on site pretty well. Um, he is aware that the East Street Connection. Will be key for any redevelopment opportunity on that site. Um, and so there's. Um, nothing he's done has, has gone against that. If, if anything, he's supportive of the city working towards. Uh, redevelopment opportunities and setting that stage. Lisa, is there anything else you would, you would add to that one?
No, I will, uh, just wait, um, Austin, that's, uh, that's exactly right. We continue to work with Mr. Patel. And we continue to work with, uh, we, we pull every thread there is to pull. Uh, when it comes to trying to forward, um, any redevelopment opportunities on the brewery. Um, the fact that we've got an EPA grant that's gonna help us with phase one and phase two environmental assessments is really helpful. Um, the fact that we got, um, and this is, um, this is kudos for Austin while he's actually here and can hear me say it. Um, uh, getting the, uh, integrated planning grant from the Washington State Department of Ecology for the Wash Dot site. Is actually very helpful as well on the brewery because it helps to free up some of that. M- more of that EPA money to focus on the brewery property. So. It is a slow, uh, slog and, um, John Down talks about that being one of his greatest disappointments. Is not being able to do more with that. Um, and, um, you know, I'll, I, I. I and we are picking up, uh, we are picking up where John, uh, left off and. Again, trying to run every opportunity down that we possibly can. So. Yes, we continue to communicate and, um, and encourage and facilitate and. Try to get everybody moving in the same direction on that property for sure.
Good, thank you. We, we haven't talked about that very long and I've been for a while and, um. You know, election season always brings out people who, um, ask why in the last four years you haven't done anything. About the brewery and, uh, I said I would have if I owned it, but, uh. Uh, you know, it's, but anyway, I, and then, and we haven't talked about it for a while and. And this transportation stuff always brings it up. So, uh, thank you for that and, and thanks for your work on these things. Austin, I appreciate it. And so does the community to, to know what we're doing. It's, it's really important. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? So I want to thank both of you for, uh, presenting. This is always an ongoing and yes, sometimes repeat with performance. So. Uh, it, it does take a while. So. Really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right. So now we are to Mayor City Administrator Report and Administrator. Um, Parks, did you have anything?
I don't have anything tonight, uh, Mayor, other than just encouraging council members if they have any specific questions about projects. Um, I am available. Um, my phone number is the same number that John had. So, um, invite you all to, um. A call if you have any questions. Thank you.
Right. Uh, and I just had a couple of things. Uh, one is that. Uh, I think an email went out letting everyone know that the tribal support letter for the Nuswali. Uh, tribe is, uh, available to do signatures. So sitting out on the main de- uh, on the desk over there where Hannah sat. Uh, so you can come in and sign it. It's sitting there. Appreciate it if you could do that. And also a reminder that there's no council meeting next Tuesday because that's the fifth Tuesday. Which, uh, is always a nice bonus. And then the following week, our council meeting will be on Monday. Which is what we always do on Election Tuesday. We always move it to the Monday. So the next council meeting will be on Monday, uh, November sixth. And this year is zooming by. So, uh, Councilmember Kathy, did you have something?
So, uh, uh, based on the email that all of us received regarding the mobile home parks. Um, is that something that we can, uh, are we going to talk about it? Is there something that we as a, the city can do in this, uh? You know, raising of rents and, um, I, I assume we all got that, um, email.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I would just say that we, uh, had discussions of what we can do on a big broader scale. So that it's not just Tom Water, but it affects everything for all rent. Because we can't, we can't do rental controls, but if we can change policy at a state level. And so. We actually had that conversation today of how do we escalate that to make sure that happens on a broader scale? So.
So we can't do anything on a city level?
Uh, Councilmember Alhouser, did you have more comment on that?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that, to, I mean, to answer your question, Joan, like we, we are legally. Prohibited from enacting rent control. So if we wanted to directly enact that, we, we would not be able to do that. Um, like the state statute plainly says that we can't. But one thing I was going to mention is that tomorrow's RHC, there is a discussion of the shared regional agenda. That we'll be having in the context of housing. Some of the things on there include support of two pieces of legislation. That would provide for rent stabilization and they do cover mobile home parks. Um, so, so I, I, I think you and I, I think that would be a perfect opportunity for us to raise that as a regional issue at RHC tomorrow. So we can talk about that as, as a group so that we have kind of a shared regional legislative ask on that.
Very good, very good. I appreciate that because, you know, I read that and. And Debbie, you'll remember this. We went through the whole thing with the mobile home parks and, uh, you know. Yeah. So Karen Kirkpatrick will remember it too because we ended up in court, but. Uh, and the last thing I wanted to mention, and I didn't know if this, uh, got on, uh, you know, Elaine's, Eileen's, um. Agenda for Public Works or where this discussion is at all, but, uh, we brought up moving our. Maintenance crew from power, um. You know, blowers and gasoline things and so forth to electric. And I just, uh, wondered where that was because I received a email invitation kind of thing to the Environmental Washington. Where they, um, have kind of, uh, quarterly. Things to, for people to come and listen to and be updated on. And one of them was statewide. This conversation about, uh, gas powered, um, lawn and maintenance equipment. And moving away from that and encouraging cities to put that on their agendas and do it. And so. I just wanted to bring that up because we did talk about it, uh, before. I didn't know if it was anywhere. And, um, I hope it's somewhere. And I just wondered where, when we might be talking about that. And especially as it would relate to budgeting. So, anyway. That's it. And I now know that I should have called Lisa and talked about that. What she said last time.
Yeah, and, and I think we've had progress on that and, but I would have to have, uh, Lisa, do you have more details on that?
Well, I'm gonna wing it because I know very little about this, but I do know that, uh, we have a fleet management system. And people looking at both fleet as well as equipment and looking at those types of opportunities. Um, I think Dan Smith is on board as well. I believe that, um. Um, our green team, which is an internal group, um, has taken up this issue. I don't know, Dan, if you're available to. Uh, jump in here and provide any more detail. Um. There he is.
Uh, yeah, forget my background. Um, anyway, uh, we are, yeah, we do have a, a fleet assessment. Um, that we've been evaluating, kind of a replacement schedule for EV or electric or for our existing fleet vehicles where. Um, feasible, um, looking at across operations for, um, general staff vehicles as well as some of the more complex equipment that we use. Um, in addition, you know, we are evaluating, um, and I believe various departments, um, water resources. Um, is definitely doing that through our budget cycle next year, looking at and continuing or integrating some of funding. So as. Equipment needs to be replaced, evaluating what's appropriate for us to be able to use in there. Um, not as formal of an assessment as we have for our, our fleet vehicles, but, um, definitely something that's, um. That at least I know water resources and some of the other departments are looking at for that regular equipment.
Yeah, and I, the only, the only thing else I would add to that is that I, I think generally speaking, that is, uh. Uh, um, a standard thing that we're gonna be doing and it's, it's gonna become common practice looking forward. Um, is to always look for those opportunities to convert to, um, uh, green machines, so to speak. Um, I think there are some challenges. There are some inherent challenges in that. Um, uh, oftentimes that type of equipment is less available. Um, we have, you've, you've heard already the challenges that we often have in the last year or two with supply chain issues. Um, and so, you know, the example would be the Ford Lightning, um, you know, tried to get in on, on that deal. Uh, with Department of Enterprise Services and, um, they just aren't available because they aren't making them. So. Um, as they become, as, as electric vehicles and electric equipment becomes more readily available. I think that is, um, consistent with the values that, uh, and the beliefs that this, uh, organization have around, um. Uh, the environment and sustainability and, and definitely that is something that we will be looking at as we're. Moving forward with our budgeting processes for sure.
I guess, uh, I, uh, I'd like to see it. Be a very serious thing and move as high as we can get it because it really makes the difference. The amount. Of pollution put out every time. Uh, you know, the, the, and the work that everyone is doing i- in use of these as, you know, and maintaining the city is. Amazing. It's, it's good, but it, and, yeah, but the, this is just a, an area that the city could really make a difference in. You know, practicing what we're, we're preaching with, with climate and our climate action because I, um, I don't know. I could bring some statistics about how much that is polluting, but I just, I don't wanna, we don't need to go into it here. I just want. To keep this as a priority and maybe, um, Eileen can put it way down the thing as future things for. Public Works or whatever, but, um, uh, I'm, I'm just. Kind of, it's become important in our whole scale of things. So thanks.
Yeah, I might just, yeah, I might just suggest that maybe Alyssa or someone can, could do it because I know you, you would be amazed at how much work is going on in the city. For Alyssa and the Green Team and all of them working on all of this. So, uh, maybe after the first year, Dan, maybe we can ha- get on the agenda. Kind of maybe get some of the projects that the Green Team is doing that the council just may not be aware of. So.
Yeah, absolutely. That, that's probably a good time because we'll, you know, the fleet assessment memo will have gone through that. We'll have discussed it with the various directors. I know it's kind of just in draft form right now as far as proposal for what could be done. Um, you know, as Administrator Parks mentioned, you know, there's lots of factors, including, you know, the, the supply chain issues, which are really kind of challenging. But also we have, you know, kind of a long-term vehicle replacement, you know, uh, schedule. So not everything's gonna be done at once. But the goal would be to be looking at as those vehicles come up for replacement. So it could be a ten-year plan and what that looks like as we exchange those out. Um, and, and then again, also availability of, of the, the equipment that, that meets the needs for us. So. Uh, yeah, definitely after the first of the year, that'd be a good time to kind of talk about that in, in more detail with folks.
Okay. Thanks, Dan. Did we get you out of the mountains to talk about that?
No, I'm actually still sitting in my office. So. Change my background before jumping on. So.
Good. Thank you.
Take care.
Councilmember Doha?
Thank you, Mayor. That goes, Joan, great comment. Behind the scenes when Alyssa and Dan have presented like on greenhouse gases. I've circled back behind the scenes, asking for, when it comes to procurement of goods and services. To incorporate the Department of Enterprise Services Green Purchasing Guide, which identifies third-party certifications and green specifications for over eighty products. Which, by the way, I wrote, but the point is asking for that to be included in procurement, right? So it goes from everything. From, uh, gas to electric, but also the decibels, right? To removing toxics from products, right? And for disposal, right? Um, so that's ongoing update and I've asked that to be incorporated into the procurement policies. And Dan and Alyssa were really open to that. So hopefully that would address, um, a lot of your concerns of what's being purchased. And greener options that are out there.
Yeah, great. Thank you for that, Lieta. And yeah, it is, uh, it is important. And as this, you know. Climate crisis moves along, more people are asking those questions and, uh, and so I. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me just kind of put that out there. So we can know more. So, um, we're, we're doing what we say we do. And we can tell people about it. Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Lieta.
Great. All right. That's all of our agenda items this evening. And so with. Uh, I do not believe we have any more business to take care of tonight. So with that, I will adjourn the meeting and we will all see each other again on November sixth. So see, see you then.